Yeah. 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 I can't. I gotta zoom. Zoom. And then we go over, 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 there we go. Can I zoom in? Oh. There. It's not there again, that's good.
You ready? Ready? Okay. All right, well now call the city council special budget meeting to order for July seventeenth, please write us the invocation and pledge of allegiance, the invocation been given by Shelley McCure.
Lord, we come to you tonight to ask for your guidance. We ask you to direct us in the position, the direction that you want us to go in. We ask you to be with our families tonight, Lord. Be with our children and lead them in the direction that you want them to be. Go. And we pray to you in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Maybe seated. All right, Ms. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Yes, sir, Member McGuire, here. Member McCure, here. Member Taylor, here. Deputy Mayor Bernard, here. Mary Anderson, here. We have a corn.
Thank you. All right. So do you want to go over the money market account first?
Yes, please.
All right, so item number four will be the new South State money market account. Melody Schaefer.
Yes, so Nikki Dilday from South State Bank approached me probably about, I don't know, eight months ago regarding the money that we have at South State Bank that does not earn any interest. So she said that we could, she could guarantee us a five percent interest on the money that we have in the bank. So we have about thirty-two million in the bank there, but if we put twenty million into a money market account that earns five percent, it's a million dollars a year in interest revenue.
Yeah. Did they mention, did they mention how long they could guarantee that for?
They, she did not say that. I did ask her what is the effect on the bank, you know, because that comes out of their pocket, of course.
Right.
And she said that they would rather lose the million in interest than have us pull that money and put it somewhere else to earn interest.
I assure you, they will not lose a million interest.
So, but it gets divided between the general fund, the water and sewer fund and the sanitation fund.
Have you looked to see what percentage goes where yet or?
Yeah, so it's fifty. I can't remember, fifty-seven percent general, I think. Yeah.
Awesome.
Yep.
Just for a comment, I've been watching this and all the local banks and credit unions over the last year. And one of them, which was one of my, I was first drawn to was Edward Jones, I hear in Main Street. And they're up to like five point two percent or maybe a little bit more, but they're only like, like a maximum of six months. And so that's, that doesn't, and la- last year I looked at it and the maximum they had was a ye- a year. So a year was good because nobody at the time was getting five percent. But it's kind of like, I'm looking for three to five years and, and just so you know that recently the credit union, Mid Florida Credit Union just came out with a five percent at for two years.
Yep.
So just hopefully, hopefully they're going to offer at least two years or more, but I have a feeling because they're worried about the feds, things could do this real fast and they don't want to go too far out. And so that's a great job for you to find that out because, you know, even, even it's a year, then we'll take it and worry about it after that. But yeah, I've been watching that closely myself. And basically I've been participating with those and there's, there's another bank called Capital Bank that does the same thing and they do two years or they did do two years, but those are things that obviously you follow closely to and so.
We have about one point two million in a Florida prime investment account and that earns five point three three percent right now. So it started in October, was that like three point one? And then as of June, it's at five point three three. So they follow the Fed fund rate. So I would think that South State would want to keep our money there because if they
Yes.
took that away from us, we could move some money, you know.
And I'm sure they probably know that other banks and credit unions are doing similar type things as well as credit cards and other banks and you obviously want to stay with a one, I like local and two, you want something that's big that's not going to go under as we've seen earlier this year, but all I can say is if we had to make a motion, I would extend your contract at least another six months.
Maybe. I think you earned your keep this year.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Melly.
I have a question for Melanie. Melanie, what two funds is coming out of?
So it will go into the general fund, the wastewater, the water and sewer fund and the sanitation fund. And it's at fifty-seven percent in the general fund, forty-one percent in water sewer and two percent in solid waste sanitation.
Okay. You mentioned that we had thirty-two million in total, so the remaining of those funds, I'm assuming there, you can't invest those funds.
So there are, that was a question. She said that she approached previous management and was told that there were certain funds that could not were restricted to earn interest and I'd never experienced that. So I reached out to Mike and Julie at the auditors and Julie said she didn't think there was anything. And Mike got back with me and said to check the ordinance for impact fees. And that states that it just has to be in an account if it earns interest, the interest goes to the impact fees.
So we may be able to put another ten million or so in the future.
But she's cautious because she said we should leave at least seven million in a, the treasury account, which is where all the monies transfer in and out of because of the fees.
Yeah, I see.
But if we're, if we could take seven million and earn a hundred and sixty on it and the fees are only, you know,
Sure.
twelve thousand, we might want to just go ahead and do that anyways and pay the fee.
Yep.
So it's going to take a little massaging.
And for all we know, we might have a repeat of the nineteen eighties and interest rates might be seventeen percent again, so we'll see.
I had a mortgage like that.
And my other question, Melanie, I read your email that you attached that you wanted them to change the mayor to second and Jim to third as a signer. Who's the first?
So it was Mark, the mayor, then the vice mayor and then myself, but she said it doesn't matter the order that they're on the forms. It's just the four, four signatures.
Just four people have the ability to sign, basically.
Yeah. We have to have two signers sign the check, every, every check we issue, so.
Go all the way through.
Okay. Anything else on the money market account?
No, just that we need to pass that we want to open a money market.
Okay, so you will need to, you will need a vote. Okay, so do we have a motion to open a money market account as Melody stated?
I shall move.
Okay. Wait, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Awesome.
Awesome, right.
All right, I'm number five. Main event is the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four draft general fund budget discussion. Melody?
So our budget this year for the general fund is based on, I actually did three, three different projections for the ad valorem tax. So we're doing it at the current rate, which is five point three six eight one. The five point mill and actually the, the actual rollback rate, which give us the same revenue that we had last year. And then our return on investment that we get from the water sewer fund will be directly related to which mills, which mill we choose.
Okay.
There is no cost of living adjustment. If we gave everybody a three percent increase, it would be right around a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Another thing, the Florida retirement system in July increased the employer contribution from eleven point nine two percent to thirteen point five seven percent. So that's affected the budget. And we have vacant positions, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight vacant positions that we're working on filling. And we are requesting a new position, a budget manager position, which is not in this budget, but if you approve it, we would, we would add it.
So those vacant positions, they were budgeted last year as well, right?
Yeah, they're in the budget.
They've been vacant the entire time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
No.
Oh.
Not the, we've lost a co, like our operators, they've been filled. Code enforcement was filled, we're looking, that code enforcement be filled probably within the next two weeks, right?
Yeah.
Code enforcement. And the wastewater treatment mechanic will be filled probably soon, right? So we've got some that will be filled. The C and D was all filled until we lost somebody.
Got it. Okay.
I have a question. Is it twenty twenty-six that we have to have a minimum wage increase? So.
Fifteen, but we're pretty close to that.
Okay, so that, my question was, you know, can we look at making smaller steps this year and next year to get to that in advance instead of having to get one big, which I'm sure you looked at that.
Is it twenty-six? I thought it was twenty-five. Is it, which one is?
Twenty-six.
I think it has to be done by the end of twenty twenty-five.
It has to be.
Twenty-six, so.
It's a dollar a year, I mean, yeah, a dollar a year, I thought, no?
Dollar an hour.
Right.
Yeah, depending on how they did it. Our, our lowest salary right now is fourteen forty-two.
We have to get up to what, sixteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, oh. Okay, so a slight increase or three percent would get us going. Okay.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, so our general fund revenues, I added another row on here that you don't have in your handout.
Okay.
So the, the first row is going to show you your total revenues if we have our mill at five mills. And we have, we've been discussing with Stan Tech about the fire assessment fee and they've got some ideas about, I want to say Lily Lake, I can never remember, Crystal Lake. They all, they have four hundred and ninety-nine resident dwellings there and they're only being charged for eighty. So that's a big increase in revenue. And there's some vacant lots that we're not charging. And the way that they do the calculation that increases the square footage on commercial and industrial, so we'll bring that before you, but I just wanted to show you what it would, it's like two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Okay.
So if we go and with that scenario, we'd take six hundred and five thousand out of the general, I mean, out of the wastewater fund to to break even in the general fund.
At five mills.
At five mills, yeah. At four point three six eight one mills, which is what our current mill is right now and no increase in the fire assessment, we're looking at seven point two million and we'd be taking out one point one million out of the water sewer fund. And then if we stayed at the rollback rate is five point oh five oh four mil, which will give us the same revenue that we got the current year that we're in, we'd be taking almost one point three out of wastewater.
Does this take into account the return on investment from the money market account?
Yep.
So even with the money market account, we still would be pulling six hundred and five thousand up?
Yep. And that's this, there's no capital yet, we'll discuss that later. This is strictly operating.
Okay.
What was the, the first figure you said if we went to five mills, what was the amount?
So five mills, it would be six hundred and five thousand that we would take out of.
Okay.
And that would also be increasing the fire fee, fire assessment.
That's with the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then this next slide just shows the revenues as a percentage, they're based on categories, so your, your biggest revenue is of course ad valorem tax. Our taxable value this year increased by thirty-nine million. This is our, the estimated value comes out on June first, but this number could change if some residents have a discrepancy with their, what they think their value is, they can go to the value assessment board and dispute it, so that number could change. This next slide just shows our millage rate over the past five years. And our ad valorem tax would be one point nine million if we went with the five mills. This next slide shows the Avon Park Lake Placid Sebring and Highland, Highlands County, their millage rate over a ten-year, twelve-year period. As you can see, we dipped ours way down to point three for almost ten years, so.
Yeah.
Our predecessors, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So even if we stay with the four point three, we're still below Sebring. Unless, you know, they reduce theirs drastically. They're at five point eight one right now.
Okay.
And I think the county's doing a large increase too.
Eight point one.
Yeah.
So one of the categories that we have in the general fund is sales and use tax and that includes local option gas taxes and fire insurance premium tax. And that comes in at four hundred and seventy thousand. And of course, the local option gas tax is your biggest revenue in there. And that is budgeted at five hundred and thirty thousand with a thirty thousand dollar increase. Fire insurance premium is budgeted at forty thousand, which is the same as last year. And the casualty insurance premium for the police pension, we don't get that anymore when our last active
Right.
police officer left us, we don't get the money from the state anymore, so we have to eat that cost.
Yep.
The next category is franchise fees and that is budgeted at eight hundred and nineteen thousand. That includes electric franchise fees, which is budgeted at eight hundred thousand, that was but way budgeted way low last year. I'm not sure, you kind of have to see what's going on, you know, during the year, so I budgeted much lower than it should have been, so that's an increase of a hundred and seventy thousand.
Maybe even more.
Maybe.
After this summer.
Gas franchise fees is budgeted at nineteen thousand, which is an increase of two thousand. The next category is utility service tax. That shouldn't say franchise fees down there, but utility tax total is one million two hundred and sixty-three thousand. The next slide is just a chart of, again, the percentages of taxes, electric utility tax is the largest tax in this category. And electric utility tax comes in at eight hundred and eighty thousand, which is a thirty thousand dollar increase. Water utility tax is budgeted at a hundred and forty, which is a five thousand percent increase from last year. Gas utility tax is budgeted at twenty-five thousand, it's an increase of two thousand. Communication service tax is budgeted at two hundred and eighteen thousand, it's a decrease of twelve thousand. And if you have any questions or if I'm going to us, please let me know.
Yeah, why is it going down?
What's that?
Why is it going down?
It's budgeted on, you know, all I can do is look at what's happening this year and see, you know, last year there was more, so I don't know if, you know, you wouldn't think that people would have less cellphone or internet service, but it's based on their, it's a tax based on what they pay.
Well, it could be too, that during and after COVID, used people were home and that was their entertainment. And now hopefully they're back to work and they don't have time to do as much. Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
So the next category is local business tax, it's budgeted at thirty-two thousand, which is an increase of four thousand. Licenses, permits and fees consists of garage sale permits and that comes in at two hundred. Yeah.
How much is a permit fee for a weekend?
Two dollars.
Two dollars? That for Friday and Saturday? Well, that's pretty cheap.
But it pretty much stayed the same?
Wow, I thought it was a lot more than that. That's good for the question to make money.
Right? True.
Well, yeah, but don't you, or we used to have people go out on Saturdays to make sure they had their permits. We probably don't have the shirt. Thank you.
It's a two dollar, right?
Yeah. And I'm sure the sheriff's not too interested either, so.
The next category is intergovernmental revenues and that comes in at one million five hundred and twelve thousand. Your largest moneymaker in that category is your half cent sales tax at forty-seven percent. And that is budgeted at seven hundred and sixteen thousand, which is an increase of sixteen thousand over last year. Eight cent sales tax is budgeted at a hundred and seven thousand, which is a decrease of eleven thousand.
I thought we were seven and a half, am I way off here?
No, it's a tax that is implemented through the, the state of Florida. It's not your sales tax.
Okay.
It's, it's a fuel tax, actually.
I got you. That makes sense now, thank you.
Yep. Mobile home fees is budgeted at five thousand, it's an increase of six hundred and sixty dollars. Alcohol beverage license tax is budgeted at ten thousand two hundred, an increase of seventeen hundred. Revenue sharing, these are also taxes on fuel, is budgeted at four hundred and forty thousand, which is an increase of twenty-three thousand four hundred. Firefighter supplemental compensation is budgeted at eighteen hundred, three hundred dollars over last year. And this is compensation paid to firefighters who have a college degree. So they, the state gives us the money and we in turn give it to the employee. DOT highway lighting contract is budgeted at eighty-three thousand six hundred and twenty, it's an increase of two thousand four hundred and forty dollars. The mowing contract is budgeted at thirty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty, it's the same as last year. The Highlands County Recreation Grant of a hundred and ten thousand is the same as last year. I've been in contact with the county because normally we get the interlocal agreement in the first week of July. And we haven't got it yet, it's not passed yet, so that might be iffy.
Okay.
Or it might be more. Could be. The next category is charges for services, which is budgeted at nine hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Which includes zoning fees, budgeted at seven thousand five hundred and fifty, an increase of three thousand five hundred. That's zoning. Zoning fees. So if, yeah, somebody wants to change their zoning, yeah. Fire inspections come in at one thousand one hundred and fifty, which is the same as last year. And the fire assessment fees, this is the same a budget that we had last year, if it increases, we'll have to adjust the budget.
At least by a dollar. I don't like that six six six.
Code enforcement fees are budgeted at twenty thousand, which is an increase of five thousand. Looks like Randy's been busy.
Yes, yeah.
Rental fees, budgeted at seven hundred and seventy dollars, which is the same as last year, that slide's incorrect, but this is just for park rental. Is what, for what? For parks, for like Donaldson Park, if you rent the pavilion. It doesn't include the, I'm not sure why there's two different categories, but that's how it's been done, so.
Oh, ho- hold up a minute, I didn't know that. There's a fee to rent the Donaldson Park? All parks?
The pavilions.
The pavilion.
Just the pavilion. And I don't know, pavilions at parks, they're, they're for rent. But if you just want to park, it's not correct.
So if you want exclusive use of those pavilions, in other words, anybody can go out there and use them, but if you want to say, look, I want to have a birthday party, I don't want anybody else to use this particular pavilion, there's a fee for that.
The next category is fines and forfeitures. Which comes in at twenty-one thousand five hundred. Court fines are budgeted at nineteen thousand four hundred dollars, which is an increase of four thousand four hundred dollars. Police education funds are budgeted at fifteen hundred, it's an increase of five hundred dollars. Restitution is budgeted at six hundred, which is the same as last year. The next category is other miscellaneous revenues, which are budgeted at six hundred eighty-five thousand four hundred dollars. Which includes your return on investment. This also includes the interest, which is your largest revenue maker this year in that category. So interest income is budgeted at six hundred one thousand two hundred dollars, which is an increase of six hundred thousand eight hundred dollars. Rental income for governmental buildings is budgeted at eighty thousand two hundred dollars, which is an increase of four thousand. This includes the community center rental, we also have a cell tower that we rent and a billboard.
A billboard?
Mm-hmm. Which one is that? They're going to ask me where it is, I don't know, I have to find out where it is. Not sure.
One by the college?
Maybe.
The one that tells you what games are going on and so forth.
Miscellaneous revenues is budgeted at four thousand, it's the same as last year and this revenue is hard to predict because you've got your, anything that has no other category, insurance reimbursements that come in, that kind of thing going here. Return on investments, I budgeted this on the five mil, but that will, that's probably going to change, so. And that ends the revenues. Anybody have any questions?
Biggest change this year versus last year is the lack of the one point some odd million grant that we got last year.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was one point two, was it?
For American Rescue Plan funds. Two point, was one point seven, I think.
The general.
Seven, eight.
Yeah.
And that's the end of that money, right?
Yes, we'll have used it up by the end of this fiscal year on the sheriff's office payments that we make.
Okay.
Great, thank you, good job.
Thank you. Okay, total general fund department is, this is also broken down into four categories, but the total expenses are budgeted at eight million three hundred fifty-eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars. The largest expense in this category is public safety. And that consists of, oh no, sorry. Total governmental funds are budgeted at one million forty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. And the largest And the largest um expense category is city manager. Which is kind of uh deceiving because there's a lot of other salaries that are um. Charged to city manager.
Blaming on Mark. Don't cover him. Come on.
That doesn't include the sheriff?
No.
Under public safety?
Public safety does include the sheriff. So public safety will include the sheriff's office, the fire department, code enforcement. And planning.
Okay, thank you.
City council expenses come in at eighty four thousand four hundred dollars, which is an increase of nine thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. And then the next slide shows you what we budgeted last year by line item. And what's budgeted this year and then the difference in the far right hand corner. So if anybody has any questions about any of those, I don't think we need to go over each one individually. Oh. So when FRS um notified us of the increase in July. For general employees, there's also a category in there for um. Elected officials and that rate is. Fifty four percent, fifty four point something percent. But right now, you all are only getting the general employee. Thirteen point five seven percent.
We're looking into why at this point, if you're supposed to get, I mean, that's quite the difference. I mean, that's the most, that's the highest elected official. I've always been against it, but not these elected officials, but. We're looking into why, if for some reason, did you, you were calling FRS, if there was something. That you were only getting the the eleven point something, the regular employees, so.
Yeah.
And the reason I'm bringing it up, well, number one, we're looking into it. Two, if it is, then that's gonna go up a lot higher.
Wouldn't it be based off of your salary, not the, because most of the pay that goes, ends up going to the council is from the insurance? If you're not using the insurance, right?
Yeah, that probably wouldn't be included, but your pay, your regular pay per the ordinance you get, I mean, you would get. If it's correct, which at this point, I gotta believe it probably is. You'd be getting fifty.
Fifty four points, something.
Yeah, percentage on that, which is a heck of a lot more than eleven. Again, that's.
Yeah, we've been researching records here to see if there was something that was passed that said that that's where you all would fall. But then we have to contact FRS and see, is that legal?
Yeah.
To do that.
Well, for for what it's worth, in the years I've been sitting here, I've never heard it brought up ever, so I don't think it's even been discussed.
Okay.
Well, we just wanna do what's right. If you're supposed to get it. Then you should be getting it.
Got it, absolutely.
So on the city manager account, how are we? Decreasing by forty eight thousand?
So that, we had. Two admin assistants budgeted in that department instead of one. Somehow there was two budgeted. And Jeanette moved from over there to finance.
And then what about the other contractual services? So. Going down twenty nine thousand.
Would that be IT?
No. Hold on, let me pull it up. Sorry, I meant to have this pulled up before.
Oh, no problem.
I got a question. Why is she looking at it for Mark? Mark, do we supposed to have another clerk? Upstairs? I'm I'm asking because of the empty desk.
No.
No.
But actually, when I got here, there was a part time person. And. Two years ago, I think it was, I asked to um do away with the part time, take that funds and then more to make a purchasing agent.
So that difference was the software. We moved it to five nineteen instead of. City manager, at other general um expenses.
Got it.
Which which item pays for our homeowner's insurance?
Which what?
Which item pays for our homeowner's insurance?
You mean our liability insurance?
Yeah, that keeps going up.
Yeah, that um.
Can you find a spot for that?
Actually, that, they are predicting a thirty two percent increase in. Insurance this year, so that's a big, big chunk.
Yeah, we lost State Farm and we lost AAA. State Farm is being sued, by the way, for irregular practices. But they're. Praying that if we, if we have a, one thing we could add to our prayers, which I thought of recently, they say if we can have a really good. Lack of hurricane season. Then that should bring more competition back next year. But so.
Hopefully.
Pray for no hurricanes and our homeowner insurance will go down, but if we have one or two. Um badly affects any place. Even not here. And yeah, we're uh. I'm tired of mine going up five or six hundred dollars every year, and I know some are going up a thousand or more every year, so. But sorry for the interruption.
Okay. So any more questions on the city manager expenses? The finance department is budgeted at eighty three thousand seven hundred and ninety, which is an increase of twenty eight thousand forty dollars. And most of that is due to the um. Increase in salaries. So you know, everybody gets a forty five cent increase. Always. Right? They move up a step, yeah, regardless if we give a three percent or not. So everybody that is. What kind of a worker, Mark? So not. So the managers, the non supervisors get an automatic increase. Anybody who is not. Who is a supervisor does not get an automatic increase.
And how much is that?
It used to be forty five cents, so it's a step.
That's every year?
That's pretty.
Until year fifteen and then they're topped out. They don't get anything unless they get a cost of living raise.
City attorney is budgeted at one hundred forty seven thousand ninety dollars, which is the same as last year.
I have a question on that. His expenses when. When he goes off to. Forums and and things like that. Does that come out of this one?
Yeah, we've got a little bit of travel and per diem in there, six hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, six hundred and fifty dollars. Um but yeah, it should come out of here. And then if he goes to that FRA, we will have to move money from. Yeah, but that's in his. Yeah. Yeah. Were you talking about just going to conferences or were you, yeah?
Okay.
He generally goes to the same conferences over and over. Doesn't change much. I think this is the first new one and.
The FRS one, yeah. FRA, actually. Other governmental services are budgeted at two hundred sixty four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. Which is an increase of ninety four thousand. Forty of that, so last year, we're gonna have to revise last year's budget because I omitted this. From the audit. So that's one of the big um increases. And then other contractual services increased by. Twenty three thousand. I'm gonna try to find out what it is. So we moved some of the um subscriptions for municide. Into here, into this category. And we also have um. The copy machines that we got, the Xerox copy machines are a little more per month than. Uh the Toshiba's that we had. And the other big one, the insurance, that's the thirty two percent increase.
Do we have all the uh IT computer equipment? That that we're gonna.
Been purchased.
Yes.
But it's not been deployed yet. It's deploying now.
It's all been purchased.
Yes. Public safety category is budgeted at five million five hundred sixty four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. It's an increase of two hundred and seventy nine thousand twenty dollars. And of course, your largest expense in this. Category is police, but fire's pretty close, forty nine and forty two percent respectively. Oh, yeah, I, yeah, I made a change. I had a um. Transposed number, so police is actually two point. Two million seven thirty four, not two million three. Forty seven. And police comes in at two million seven thirty four, five hundred, four hundred and fifty dollars, which is an increase of. Eighty eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
That's their standard percentage increase, right?
Per the agreement, yeah, three percent.
And the agreement's up this year, so we'll have to renegotiate.
What's the planning and zoning for?
Planning and zoning is uh Central Florida Regional Planning Council. It's the fee that we pay them.
Okay, thank you.
Uh fire department is budgeted at. Two million seven hundred and thirty four. Yes, you can.
Actually, Melly said it was an increase of eighty eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars for Sheriff's House. That's because they didn't bill us for all of it last year because they couldn't fill the positions. Actually, an increase. If they had all the positions filled, it's seventy five thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars.
Okay.
But they're all filled now, right?
Yes, they actually, uh Major Hood told me, he actually just found out. Two weeks ago, the last meeting he was at, that actually they've got. All the sergeants are there, but they've got enough deputies, so every shift you got one sergeant and three deputies on.
Thank you.
Twelve ounce shoes or eight ounce? Twelve ounce shoes or eight ounce?
Twelve.
And that's the wrong graph for the fire department. My apologies. So their biggest increase is the fire plan. You know, we have to to make that plan whole, so this year. We have to put in four hundred twenty five thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. Which is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase.
Is that based off of uh this past or this current year's actual performance, or do we not know that yet?
Actuarial valuation that comes out every year.
Okay.
And it's in that plan.
So they're just thinking that next year is gonna be lower? Okay.
Code enforcement is budgeted at four hundred fifty four thousand five hundred forty dollars, an increase of thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty. That's basically due to personnel increases. Planning and zoning is budgeted at forty eight thousand five hundred dollars, which is an increase of five thousand over last year. We just got their new um. Services letter. The other day. Streets Department is budgeted at one million one hundred twenty eight thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, which is a decrease of. Thirty seven thousand four hundred and ten.
Why is it a decrease?
The um. Uh.
Please.
Department of Corrections, we had them budgeted in there under other contractual services and I took that out.
Okay, thank you.
Any indication if they're gonna be more available going forward or?
None.
Did they say one mark? Same thing? I mean, you know, lack of.
Yeah, he hasn't, he hasn't brought it up. Last time we talked, I mean, it was still the same. It's been maybe two months since I talked to him last time.
I I guess the reason why I'm asking, because COVID is pretty much over and they're not back to hiring and keeping people no more, you know. Uh is, wasn't that the reason?
Yeah, they couldn't find people to hire.
But.
Whether they, whether they do now, you know, have brought people on, I don't know. Like I said, I talked to him a couple of months ago and there was no. Nothing in the future. They were gonna be able to bring crews out.
If if they had it, they probably would would do it, right? I mean, that would be a plus for them, actually.
Oh, yeah, they like bringing them out, sure.
You're, we would be paying an officer's.
Correct.
Part of his salary to be with them, so. I think they would offer to us quickly. Thank you.
The next department is Culture and Recreation, which is budgeted at six hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. That's broken out into four separate categories. The biggest expense is Parks at seventy two percent.
Um, can I, can I go back just to one, just one, to the street department?
Yep.
I noticed that they had forty five hundred dollars in the budget for mosquito control. Um, are we still doing that or is that even saying anymore?
Sorry.
I say to the county, doesn't do it, Sebring, nobody does it. Two years ago, well, three years ago when I got here. They did it the first time I was here and then I asked about certification. We had people out here spraying that weren't certified. No liability there. And we had a person trying to pass. He's no longer here. He was Poke Works Director. He didn't pass the test. And then they had used someone in the past that could do it and he couldn't do it anymore, so. David Roberts, I don't think he's got anybody certified at this point, but until we get someone certified, no, we can't do it, but.
Well, I don't, I don't know about the spraying, but. I don't know if you could use that money. A couple of years ago, the the county had invested in some little tablets that they handed out. To people to put into tires, to put into the water into tires. So maybe if we can't use that money to honor sprayer. Maybe we can make those funds available to other things to pass out to the community to have them. Treat their own stuff.
He- here's my thing, Mark, this question for you. Do you believe we need it? Because there are people complaining about mosquitoes. I don't know if y'all getting the same complaint. They're bad.
Yeah.
Well, all I need is a consensus. You can take a vote. Do you want it it done and I'll make sure someone gets, I'm not gonna be certified, but. Make sure somebody gets certified and we go out here and spray on it. Do I know what good it does? I I can't tell you. I know the county stopped years ago.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the efficacy of it, there's probably uh, you know, private companies that do it. And they probably have a lot more insight or research into it, so I mean, I don't know, maybe we could just reach out to a few. Pest control companies and see if they. Have any, I mean, I know on the coast they do it a lot, particularly in, you know, around saltwater areas, but.
Well, I noticed they have some cases of malaria that just showed up over on the west coast also. I don't know how far that, if they put a stop to it yet, if it's moved in or not, but.
I guess it's two folders. One is the the question of the efficacy, so. Is it doing us any good or not? And then the other would be, how much money do we wanna devote to that and? Is it worth it to go to an outside company or have an inside person doing it?
So. And if I remember right, when Waylon was here, he called around and. None of our local pest controls actually go out and spray, so, but I mean, we can look into it. none of our local pest controls actually go out and spray. So, but I mean, we can look into it if.
Well, some cities were even passing out those little fish, I mean, even to the individual homeowners and things like that. Some were doing the tablets, some were doing the fish, but there, there may be grants out there for stuff like that.
I don't know. I mean, it's kind of, you know, beyond the scope of this meeting tonight, because this is just simply, do we want to have it in the budget or not? And then as far as if it gets implemented, it's kind of a separate issue. But it sounds like there's definitely interest in keeping it there, um, for spraying, and if not spraying, then tablets or some other things, so.
Yeah, I, I, I talked to the city manager just a week or two about the same thing and, uh, uh, and firstly, uh, I don't really think that the spraying that we did really did much good, because I, like I told him, when we were little kids, we're, we're going back half a century now, okay? When they used to spray the cities, you couldn't drive down the street because it was just one big fog. But one, the one that we used the previous five years, three, our last five years, you couldn't hardly even see anything come out of the back of the machine. And I didn't really see a decrease in mosquitoes, because I do have mosquitoes on my property. Well, mainly because I have a pole in the backyard, I think, and it's an old, old house, but, uh, I, I have heard people complain about. I just don't know. I would love, if we could spray and it would do some good, I'm for it, but I don't know whether spraying would actually do, would actually work. And that's why I, I think if we did it, I'd rather see if we could find somebody that professionally does it, because then I think that then they'd be held liable to. If we're gonna pay you to do this, then we expect some results. Whereas if we just have a little machine, it looks like a little generator, it puffs out a little bit of smoke, that you may or may not smell it. Uh, you don't even know if you actually get any effect out, because I know we did before. I didn't notice any effect of it whatsoever. And, uh, so that's my opinion. I think if I'd rather have us look to see if there's somebody that would do it professionally, but like you said, there might not be anybody available. Maybe that's part of the reason why the county doesn't do it, because you would think that the county would definitely do it, because they have a lot of outside areas that, you know, that are a lot of, uh, farmland and walk, a lot of lakes and things like this, so.
Maybe they're in the same position we are.
They don't have anybody qualified too, yeah.
And my thing is, Jim, if we have professional to do it, and you know, his price is steep.
Yeah.
And he's only gonna spray so many times or whatever.
Yeah.
And we got our own people, and we can have them spray
Every week.
as often as we want.
Every year.
That's, that's the only problem I have with the two. Getting it sprayed as often as we want or, or we think we need, or have someone else do it, and they go, give us a contract telling us how many times they're gonna do it.
Or I'll see what I can find out. We'll bring it back the next regular meeting.
Yeah, we, we got time to do something with that. If, if you can find any answer at all, actually, but, uh, I, I guess it's worth looking into, because, uh, I know that, uh, the complaints I got, they don't, they don't like the answer that we don't, we don't spray, and we don't have somebody qualified, but it's kind of like, but when we did spray, I didn't really see much positive effect, but, uh, I guess maybe it's mine over matter, because I know I was doing this no matter whether they were spraying in front of my house or not.
Hopefully somebody's got a research paper that'll tell us all the answers.
Yeah. All right, it's, it's all in your hands, Mark. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up, Bill.
Okay, Parks Department is budgeted at four hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, which is an increase of seventy-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. And that is directly related to the contract that we have with River Greens, um, that we signed.
Okay.
Culture and Recreation is budgeted at twelve thousand dollars. Uh, so this is for, um, donations that we, a lot of the donations we do from the CRA, which we're not allowed to do that anymore. So if you guys wanted to increase this amount to do some of that, it might be a good idea to, to do that now, because we do five thousand for fireworks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what is it?
No, the five thousand doesn't come out of CRA. For the fireworks. You mean, it's in there. Yeah, that's not.
That's in here.
It's like the Blueberry Festival with the thousand dollars. You can't do that out of CRA anymore. So if you want to do it, now might be the, if you choose to do it out of general funds.
I vote we get out of the business of promoting events.
That's the other option.
Let people do it themselves.
Well, do we have excess funds left over in this year's budget that we could just?
I think there's about four thousand maybe left.
I mean, could we, if we're not gonna, you have that account anymore, couldn't we just disperse that to uh, average basis to those that used to, you'd get it, and then shut down this item?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would say we're so close to the end of the fiscal year, we don't know, we don't want to be taking funds, because this may have to fill in for something that was over. So for her to balance the budget.
We could all use it for something else.
Right.
Okay, that's a good answer. Thank you.
If not, it'll stay in the savings account.
Okay.
But it's now making money.
Okay, good enough. That's a great answer. Thank you.
Okay, next department is recreation. It's budgeted at one hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, an increase of eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty. And that's directly related to, um, property insurance increase thirteen thousand, so. Community Center is budgeted at thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty, an increase of six thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. And that is related to electricity and insurance.
Do we have an idea of what the revenue is from that building? I don't think that it was its own line item, was it?
The rental, it was not its own, um, but hold on, I can see if I can find it.
That roof leak issue all already been fixed. I remember.
Brand new roof.
So that's, we don't have any problem with
Nope.
using the whole community center if we have to, okay?
No.
Rest of our lifetime.
So can the CRA fund, sorry, can the CRA funds be used for the buildings, repair and maintenance? Since it's the community center?
Yeah, so it was the, not the everyday maintenance, but the large items could be, in other words, like, uh, you know, roof or windows, things like that, generally same things that are for the facade. And then if you look at the new definitions that, uh, Jerry put out, the, you know, facade is a little bit broader than what we were using it for.
But like, so like the six thousand that's in the budget, that that's the regular everyday.
I couldn't tell you what that six thousand's for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the revenue at the community center is budgeted at twenty-five thousand?
Okay. Does it have the audited from the previous year?
Mm-hmm.
What is that?
The, oh, I don't know the answer to that.
Sorry.
To get. Hold on, I can tell you the exact from the year from twenty-two.
Okay.
It was twenty-seven thousand, three dollars.
Got it. Okay.
And that's the end of the presentation for the general fund.
All right, any questions from Melly on general fund?
Um, I, I do have a question. The Lucy Dirkman Field, is it under parks? Or are we, because I didn't see that on there anywhere, unless I overlooked it, if you could tell me.
So it's gonna be under parks. Let me tell you what slide it is. So slide number eighty-six has, let's see, we have Anoka Softball Field, Dura Martin Memorial Field. Oh, it is Anoka, mm-hmm. So that we have fourteen hundred, forty dollars budgeted in that account, but we also have in ballpark maintenance, twenty grand to be used wherever it's needed.
Do you still have people that use that field, utilize that field?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
I have no idea if the, I mean, no, Leager doesn't, but.
Oh, we still maintain it?
Oh, yeah. Anybody can go out there and use it anytime they want, but the youth was using it, youth league was using it for a short time, just an extra one, but.
And we call it now Anoka Softball Field?
No, that just happened to be what's probably been in the budget for the best twenty years. We don't know, so.
What about the, uh, the ball field that's out there on, on or near the airport? I know that, um, the, one of the biggest complaints out there was no, was lack of shading. Isn't that something that could come out of CRA funds from the airport, because it would be, uh, um, a structural?
It's about Dura Martin.
Yes. What'd you say, what?
Dura Martin, right?
Dura Martin, yes.
Dura Martin.
Yeah. Isn't that something we could bring up to see if CRA could use airport money for that?
It can be used for.
They got a hundred and twenty-five thousand reserves.
Yeah, they do.
I think, uh, you could add that to their next agenda or something.
Just don't tell JT.
Yeah, because I know Dan asked for like last Well, I thought JT wasn't gonna, Pam wasn't gonna be dealing with that.
They're not, but when, back when it came, and I said, good, we can use that funds for the ball field. They want to use them for the other one, but I mean, it can be brought up to CRA Advisory Board. I'm sure they'd want to use it there. But yeah, that's where we were trying to get the FERDA for. We're gonna have a lot of things then.
Yeah.
We ran into problems like running into the, everything out there with the property and
Yeah.
the parcels and.
Was the ownership issue squared away finally or no?
On that, no.
That, that was the problem with FERDA grant.
Yeah, but no, that attorney that Jerry and I were on with, with Corbett, um, she said there's, there's a lot to do with that, that you're gonna have to involve your city attorney, and probably Jerry have to reach out to another attorney that when we, and I was telling Corbett, he didn't know, I was telling him that night. Years ago, the city got a FERDA grant for that. There's a sign out there, so this building was paid for by FERDA grant, so.
Got it. Okay.
I have a question for the city manager, um, some of those things that we could do with the Main Street CRA money, um, that would work for city buildings, correct? We talked about some of the funds could be used for city buildings. Well, what about the, um, the one where combo works? Um, that's no longer a city building, but could the CRA purchase that for a small amount and then put in to administrative as well as maintenance fees for that building, chamber commerce?
Could the CRA buy the building?
Yeah.
I don't know. If, if they ever vacated, it automatically goes back to the city. So I, I don't know. I don't know if the CRA wants to own a chamber.
I'm just saying is that, that they could use Main Street CRA money then to help the chamber.
Well, I'd say she could probably put in now for a facade grant, not inside the building, though.
Okay. Yeah, she, I think they've already done the inside of the building.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have one thing that we didn't discuss in the CRA meeting. What about, uh, put some money into the senior citizens?
No. Really, we can't talk about anything other than what's on the agenda in a special meeting.
Yep. No, if you're talking about the, you know, up in the city budget, uh, in lieu of something like that, then that's, that's one thing. But if it's purely a CRA question, it needs to be at the CRA meeting. It sounded like that was purely a CRA question. Our next CRA meeting is when?
Monday at five thirty, right?
The next CRA board meeting is gonna be Monday at five thirty, and then the next CRA advisory meeting is gonna be, I believe, August tenth.
Remember that question till then?
What was the date again?
CRA board is July twenty-fourth, next Monday. Next CRA advisory, I believe, is August tenth.
August tenth, thank you.
Okay.
And we have a budget meeting Monday, the twenty-fourth at four, so it's gonna be a long afternoon.
Are we doing this at four?
Mm-hmm, okay. There's a budget meeting scheduled for Monday as well at four.
So that's CRA.
In August, not Monday.
Oh. Well, no, Monday.
Monday, the twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Four, five thirty and six.
Yes, so we can maybe do four thirty if you guys would prefer that.
It's all crap shoot to me. I really don't care.
Let's leave it at four then, see how far we can get through. I think we'll probably do.
Are we talking about anything to do with CIP that generally goes long?
No.
Okay.
We still have infrastructure, which would be CIP, so I'll hold that off, CRAs, airport, sanitation and water sewer.
Okay.
So four o'clock.
Four o'clock Monday.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess.
In addition to the council meeting at six, in addition to the CRA at five thirty, correct? Or who's bringing snacks?
Pizza Hut still deliver. All right, anything else for the good of the city with the budget hearing?
No.
Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.